And if they were going, if they would guarantee us a fix for Hearst by the end of this legislative session, we could have, we could have waited, but none of us had any confidence that that would happen. So, we've been moving forward, we're continuing to move forward on our water bank and with purchase of water rights, we continue to work, move forward with developing an ordinance that will ultimately, our goal is to allow building in all Spokane County. So, we're working to get there even though tonight may not get us where we would like to be, it will get us one step closer.
Commissioner Curran?
I, I think the other two commissioners hit on it. You know, it, it doesn't stop here tonight. We, we continue to, to find those improvements, the, those situations that, that help more and more property owners because in the end, our ultimate goal is to have, to allow each and every one of you to use your property as you see fit. And this is just the next step in that process and we're going to continue, continue working forward until, until everybody is able to do that. But again, we're, we're not, you know, under any type of illusion. We understand the silver bullet from this, the thing that fixes all of this comes from the state level. That comes from our state legislators. We've been in constant contact with them. We continue to ask you folks to reach out to them as well and share with them how important that this is to you to, to get this, get this Hearst decision fixed because there's only so many things that we can do while operating within the boundaries of that Supreme Court ruling. So, we're going to continue to work at it and, you know, get us, get us as far as we can, but that ultimate fix is going to have to come from the legislature.
Okay, with that said, thank you, my fellow commissioners. I'm going to go ahead and open up the hearing for testimony. When I call your name, please come to the microphone, speak clearly, give us your name and address and then start your comments. I will be working the timer and try and give you the high sign to try and wrap your comments up. Again, it's three minutes for everybody and we'll start with Herman Valdez. And I don't start the comment, the clock until you're at the microphone and starting to make noise.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for hearing me out. The testimony I have is, my wife and I purchased a lot, an undeveloped lot.
Oh, can you give us your name and address?
Sure, Herman Valdez. It's an unincorporated lot in Chatteroy.
Okay.
Twenty acres. We purchased that three years ago. We had it, uh, does it designed as residential. Since that time, we've put in a well, power, a road, invested quite a lot of funds to do this and when we're prepared now to get a building permit, we run into this problem. So, with the monies that we have invested, we're pretty much in limbo as I have retired and I'm renting a house until I know what to do with that lot. So, for someone who's already got a well in and is prepared to, to build, maybe you can advise me on what the remedy for something like that is or the next step, do we sit and wait? Or, because like I said, I'm in limbo now as I prepare for either building or, or moving on.
Well, I would suggest that you connect with Mr. Mike Hermison, the gentleman that gave the presentation initially from staff and he might be able to chart out for you a couple of different paths forward.
Good enough, thank you.
Thank you. Next person I have is Arthur Witten.
Commissioners, Arthur Witten, 5813 East Fourth Avenue. I'm here with the Spokane Home Builders Association this evening. Thank you for the opportunity just to say a few words. I just wanted to comment briefly on tonight's ordinance. I think it's important that we hear from the many citizens, property owners here, but I just wanted to give briefly my comments on tonight's ordinance in support of it. What we've spoken about in the past and what I continue to advocate tonight is that our builders and our members are looking for certainty in this process. Tonight's ordinance moves that forward, provides more certainty as it relates to shared wells and also moving forward on the water banking methods to address in wire 55. Commissioners, you also hit on that this is a Washington State Supreme Court originating issue. This is where it came from. As we continue to work with you and work with our state legislators, I would encourage you to oppose the recent House proposal, House Bill 2239, simply a one-year kicking this issue down the road, doesn't provide builders any certainty or property owners of Spokane County. So, I would encourage you to oppose, oppose that bill, continue to support Senator Warnock's 5239 in the Senate. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Witten. And I will share with you that the board has provided to our lobbyists our support for Senate Bill 5239. It is the closest thing to the perfect solution for us in terms of resetting the clock. So, just so that you are aware of that. Next speaker is Judy Markley. You're right. Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Sam Childs.
Hello, my name is Sam Childs. I live at 6805 West Staley Road, Deer Park, Washington, and I have a 25-year well. I am concerned that my next-door neighbor, and I live in the basalt area where you have to be 70, 750 feet away, that the 10-acre lots that are allowed could potentially allow too many houses to come into our area. It was, the lots were allowed before we began to have a water issue, but the lots are still there, so technically, they could be sold. There is no system in place for me to tell any of you that five of my 22 current well users on my grid square are already experiencing water shortages in July, August, and September. Is there a system that you know of that I can tell?
So, those kind of conditions that do exist will become apparent when somebody tries to come in and get a new permit, the hydrology report, or...
These people are trying to buy that land before that hydrology report will ever be done.
Well, if somebody buys land with this, with this situation in place without making any condition of sale, I can't speak to that, but that would not be, in my opinion, that's not something that I would do.
Okay, so, what I would like is somebody that I can call, Mr. Herndon, somebody that says, "Hey, it's July, my well is producing at 50%. I'm not dry, but I'm at 50%." And if five or six people in my neighborhood are saying the exact same thing, our planning commission may want to change our lots from 10-acre lots to 20-acre lots. You can't make a planning decision without information and I'm trying to give you information, but there's nobody listening to it.
So, I would suggest maybe contacting Mr. Hermison. He's the, he's the director for that.
I have spoken with him.
Okay.
He knows who I am. All right, so, also, the water bank isn't going to fix the fact that I live on a rock at the top of the hill. The water bank is a great idea, get the water bank, but for those of us who live at the top of the hill, the water bank does nothing for me. Um, hold on, I have notes. Yeah, there are 28 extra lots on my little grid square that potentially could be sold and that's 28 additional exempt wells. Of those, if they're homes, they're probably not going to use 5,008 gallons. If they're marijuana people, they might use all 5,000 gallons and that also is a problem. All right, thank you.
Well timed. Well, that's what three minutes looks like. Next one is Ruth Ryan.
I'm Ruth Ryan, 1409 West Paradise Road, Spokane County. I'm south. I'm not in the, the north aquifer, but I'm south and I've spoken to Josh about this prior to... Okay, and thank you to staff who made a great effort to get me copies of the current paperwork. I got a chance to, this afternoon, I got a chance to read through the mess that I can tell. For my area, there was no change in being 500 feet away from the next person because I'm south. That's all the other wires, if I understand correctly. But I only got to read the paperwork once. So, that still provides a problem for us in having my daughter on the property, my sheepmeadow that I'm going to, you know, hopefully have her be able to have a place on. And the piece that's next door to that just went up for sale. It does not have a well on it, but the well on the next piece over is very close to the east line. You kind of get my drift. We're going to be with a little bit, we can't be 500 feet apart because we're in an area that was divided up, you know, we're old, we're in an area that was divided up into five acre pieces before Mount St. Helens.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, I saw no change in that and I testified about that in January, that the 500-foot just didn't work for us. And the other concern I have, and I did, I did to speak to your, Commissioner French.
Right.
The area where we live, down the road, a family planted four of their five acres in alfalfa and grass and, you know, when you first start to do that, you kind of have to, to water it some and they went out and hand-weeded it. They were getting ready to sell their place, but they wanted a good crop on there. And somebody, now, we understood these rules aren't in place yet. Somebody from the Department of Ecology came back, came out and told them they could not water their growing alfalfa field and they had to let it stand and die and some of the new owners have harvested it and tried to bale it. I mean, hopefully, there's some nutritive value left in it, but I didn't think the rules were in place yet and here, my neighbor, by the way, they moved to Michigan because it was a problem. So, anyway, I just have some questions. I don't understand rules that aren't in place. By the way, the people that live between us and them, they water theirs and nobody's told them not to. It's just the ones that were a mile from us. So, I don't know. I don't get it. I don't get it. As far as we know, nobody's well was affected. The area where I live in, there are at least three, possibly four underground aquifers that the folks tap into and we've got documentation from years past. And so, the part I live on, you could probably pump water for, forever out of it and, you know, have all kinds of wells on it and it wouldn't, it wouldn't bother the part I'm on. So, anyway, questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Pardon?
Just a clarification question for Mike. It's an or, correct? So, it's 500 feet or, based on the, based on the soil type?
Correct. They could do a...
It could go down to 100 feet for sand and gravel, aquifer, 200 feet for clay and still aquifer. So, there is an opportunity to go less than the 500 feet.
Yeah, and even in an area that's basalt, which I think she was indicating, which does have the 500 feet, you can do a hydrogeologic analysis that looks at the site-specific parameters, which I've been, heard from some different professionals that are doing those. It essentially entails having a pump test done on their well, doing some site-specific calculations and because our estimates are very conservative, those are often turning out to be, to offer a relief from 500 feet.
So, there's those three, three options?
Three options.
500 feet, 700 or 750 for the shared well. Second option, or if it fits within the certain aquifer soil type, or if you want to go even less than that, it has to be through a hydrology report.
Correct.
Okay, just to clarify for Ruth and others in the audience that there are options.
Okay, so, Mr. Kemp.
Ms. Ryan also raised the issue concerning ecology coming in and requesting somebody stop irrigating. Unfortunately, the, we don't have the ability to create water, groundwater or surface water and Department of Ecology retains control over the seniority rights on water and they reserve the right across the state to come in if they feel that there is a shortage of water to come in and have junior water rights stop irrigating or stop pumping water or whatever from any individual, for anybody out there pumping groundwater or using surface water. So, this ordinance and the thing we're doing doesn't have any impact on the Department of Ecology's ability to regulate that.
Okay. Well, I'd like to ask you to talk to him afterwards and stuff because I've already allowed you to speak once and then it puts me in a position to where I've got to violate the rules for a hearing. So, that completes the list of everybody that has signed up. So, if there's anybody else that wants to speak on this ordinance that has not signed up to speak on it, but still would like to make comments, this is the time to come forward. So, I'm going to ask for a second time if, please step to the microphone and then before you leave, I'd ask that you fill out the yellow slip and give it to the clerk.
Melissa Halpin at 20201 East Pheasant Drive, Green Acres, Salties Flats. The area I'm in has dwindling water. Year after year, the water situation is getting less and less. I bought a place three years ago that was built in 75 and there, there was so much water back then because of, there wasn't all these wells all over the place. They had an underground sprinkler system that's demolished and wrecked and deteriorated. My yard is dust, so now I get less than three gallons a minute. So, I assume they probably got 10 or 15 back in 75. Well, as people move into these 10-acre plots, they're putting more wells. We have no aquifer underneath us. There's no water out in the Salties Flat area other than wetlands. The 10 acres isn't, is too small. We are all putting in cisterns. We're, we run out of water in July. I was out of water for seven months and hauled water and I have a cistern. So, these 10-acre pots need to be bigger, there needs to be less wells. My property may be worthless. I've sunk my entire life savings into it, so I will be talking to Mike Hermison because I don't understand, I'm just new to all this lingo stuff and there's more wells being put in in my neighborhood, there's more lots for sale, there's five-acre parcels being made and so, it's just, you've got to really curb this growth in the rural areas and that's my bit. And I want to talk to Mike at a later date.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, again, second call for anybody who would like to provide any testimony. Third and final call for anybody who wants to provide any testimony on hearing item number four. Seeing nobody come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and look to my fellow commissioners for direction.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve the interim ordinance adopted by the Board of County Commissioners under Resolution Number 17-0537 regarding the processing of building permits in the rural areas of unincorporated Spokane County. The Board of County Commissioners initially adopted interim ordinance under Resolution Number 17-0059 to address the water, address the Washington State Supreme Court decision in Watcomb County versus Hearst. The interim, or, the interim ordinance adopted under Resolution Number 17-0537 further implements the Hearst decision and provides for, among other matters, shared wells and implementation of a trust water program. So, I guess I'm probably saying we are reaffirm the ordinance to clarify my motion.
And...
Anything else I need to add?
I would suggest that the direct staff prepare the...
And, so, I...
Fact and conclusions.
I'm moving that we are reaffirming that ordinance and direct staff to prepare finding and facts to support that...
It needs to be a period of time. It can be, it can be affirmed and if you're going to extend it, it can be extended up to six months at a time.
Including what he said.
Second.
So, it's in place for six months.
Correct.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? So, because we are continuing the interim ordinance status, it causes us to have to revisit it every six months until we make it a permanent ordinance. The reason why we're keeping it as an interim is so that we can continue to work to try and find enhancements, try and find ways to, to continue to work to try and make it better. So, that's the reason why it's not finalized, but once we take our action, if you want to go down to the Building Department and apply for a building permit or whatever, they can help you get through that and this ordinance will be the one that's in effect for the next six months. So, with that, all in favor, please, and keep us saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion passes unanimously. Thank you to everybody that came down to provide testimony and, like I said, stay tuned. We'll continue to work on this. And if you know a senator over in Olympia or a representative, Senate Bill 5239, just saying.
We would encourage you to call your legislators.
Yeah.
And tomorrow.
Yeah.
They're, they're negotiating now on a capital budget and on the Hearst decision options, so make sure you're actively engaged with them now.
Thank you very much. This now brings us to hearing item number five. Before I read the hearing item, it's now 6:15 and I'm going to recess for 10 minutes so everybody can take a comfort break. We will reconvene at 6:25. Okay, if everybody would take their seats, we'll go ahead and get started here. So, I'm bringing the board out of recess and it is now 6:25 and we are continuing with our hearing. Next item is hearing item number five. This is in the matter of an ordinance, interim ordinance adopted by the Board of County Commissioners under Resolution Number 17-0539 regarding the production of marijuana in the unincorporated areas of Spokane County. This interim ordinance was adopted to address odor generated from the production of marijuana, both indoor and outdoor, within the unincorporated areas of Spokane County. Other provisions within the interim ordinance are similar to those set forth in Resolutions Number 16-0915 and affirmed under Resolution Number 17-0065A. And so, again, this is part of the evolution of our efforts to try and find a path forward with regard to the expanding marijuana industry and Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, John Peterson, Department of Building and Planning. Tonight is the date you have set to consider affirming for an additional six-month time period, the interim ordinance that was adopted on June 13th of 2017 in Resolution 17-0539. As required by state law, you are required to have a public hearing within 60 days, date of adoption of an interim ordinance. And by way of background, as you introduced, the Board has had an extensive history in regulating marijuana since the implementation of Initiative 502 in 2012. We had a series of interim ordinances that culminated in permanent text amendments to the zoning code in 2011 regarding ZTA-03. Subsequent to those amendments to the zoning code, the Board have found that those text amendments to the zoning code did not adequately mitigate the impacts of indoor and outdoor marijuana production operations. As a result, in November of 2016, the Board adopted a previous interim zoning ordinance that required and limited new production facilities to indoor facilities only. After that ordinance was adopted in November of 2016, the Board held a series of public workshops to obtain more information and public input from staff and the Spokane Regional Clean Air Agency regarding potential ways to mitigate the impacts of marijuana production. On January 10th of 2017, the Board affirmed that previous interim ordinance, which precluded new outdoor production, and again, you held more workshops with staff and agencies to gain new information regarding production, potential means of mitigation. Subsequent to those workshops, on June 13th, you did adopt the present interim ordinance, which is on the overhead, identified as Ordinance 17-0539. That interim ordinance did several things. It added to the text of the zoning code in the definition chapter, new language, which is shown in the underlying versions in the text regarding the definition of agricultural. It redefined marijuana consistent with RCW 69.50, clarified further definitions of what's called a temporary growing structure, a greenhouse and a controlled plant growth structures. This is for clarification as it relates to indoor facilities and outdoor facilities for greenhouses, hoopettes, indoor and outdoor production. But we felt those were necessary when you adopted the ordinance to clarify what truly is defined as an indoor or outdoor production facility. More importantly, as it relates to the land use portion of the text, the new interim ordinance modified the zones in which marijuana can be produced and did not make any changes for production and processing, so to speak, in the industrial zones matrix or retail sales and the commercial zones matrix. But the interim ordinance did change potentially where production is allowed in the rural and resource lands where it was previously allowed as a limited use with performance standards to a conditional use permit process. The conditional use permit process, as you know, requires a public hearing process, notification of adjacent property owners, a detailed application form, an environmental checklist, payment of fees, and a public hearing before the county hearing examiner on a site-specific basis for each new production facility, be it indoor or outdoor. And in the matrix before you, you can see that production outdoor and indoor would be a conditional use permit in the small tract agricultural, large tract agricultural and forest land zones. With that came very detailed performance standards in those zones, which are very similar to the performance standards that were in place when the activity was identified as a limited use. What's new is that we have, in the interim ordinance, the Board increased the setbacks from the front property line from 50 feet to 100 feet, increased the distance from a primary residence to 300 feet, other than the residence on the property itself. It still provided the waiver provisions that were important to say if someone wanted to obtain a waiver from a neighboring property owner to reduce those setbacks, they could do that. The other significant change is that new production facilities would be limited to the minimum lot size of the underlying zone, be it a 10 or 20-acre parcel. There would be no production allowed on non-conforming lots of two, five, six, seven, eight acres and the outdoor production can use the temporary growing structure. And Mr. Vicious here from our building side of the house, if there are questions regarding what constitutes a temporary growing structure. The other new factor in this process are the criteria for a conditional use permit, that lot coverage for an indoor production facility shall not exceed 20% of the lot. That is the same lot coverage that is allowed today for any other kind of structure in rural zones. So, if you have a 10-acre parcel, if you're going to grow something indoors or have a shop or numerous outbuildings, 20% is the lot coverage. So, lot coverage for an indoor grow would be the same as any other structure on a parcel. Lot coverage for outdoor production would be determined by the county hearing examiner based upon site specifics such as the topography of the site, the canopy size, the use of temporary structures, use of odor control, ventilation, and impacts with regard to adjoining property owners with noise, dust, et cetera. And in no case should that exceed 50% of the lot. So, for example, if you had a 20-acre parcel, you could have up to 50% of that lot in production and now in other agricultural scenarios, you could farm an entire parcel. But that is limited to the hearing examiner based on a case-by-case basis, based upon the site plan that you see at the time of the conditional use permit application. And then lastly, is the, is item H in the criteria, the hearing examiner has the ability to oppose additional conditions... additional conditions as they see fit to mitigate the impacts based upon each individual site. So that could include fencing, additional buffering, limitation of hours of operation, points of ingress and egress, all determined by the hearing examiner with a detailed site plan at the conditional use permit application. Also, as part of this interim ordinance, we did change two zones in which would previously allowed marijuana production were the urban reserve zone and rural five. Those are areas which are closer in proximity to the urbanized areas. And as a result of the interim ordinance, now those areas are not able to be used for production for marijuana in the rural five and urban reserve categories as they are more closely related to the urban area and potentially have more impacts on those expanding The other amendment to the code was regarding mineral lands. We've had very little activity in mineral lands with regard to marijuana production, so the interim ordinance took that from a limited use to now it is not a permitted use in mineral lands because typically they're used for mining and resources. And there's really no need perceived to keep that use in that zone as a continuation as a limited use. So, that's all I have. Again, this is a hearing to consider affirmation of this for additional six-month period. I'm available for any questions you may have or the public may have as we move through the hearing process.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Peterson? Okay. So, the rules that applied for the last hearing will apply to this one. I've got a list of streets of folks that have signed up to testify on this. Three minutes for each individual. I will have a timer, so when the timer goes off, I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments. The, again, this is a legislative process and so I sincerely hope that there will be no outburst, screaming, yelling, applause, standing ovations, anything else. This is legislative process, we're here to hear your concerns. With that, the first person that I have signed up is Ms. Julie Oliver. Again, if you could just enter your name and address for the record, it'd be deeply appreciated.
Good evening, my name is Julie Oliver. I'm the executive director at Spokane Regional Clean Air Agency located at 3104 East Augusta Avenue in Spokane, Washington. First, thank you for the opportunity to comment on the interim ordinance. After the passage of I-502, Spokane Clean Air began working with various stakeholders and interested parties to learn about the new industry and to work with the new industry. Marijuana production and processing causes odors and emits volatile organic compounds which are air contaminants. So, I want to say thank you for continuing to include the requirement that operations must comply with the odor, the agency's odor regulation, and also for providing a list of control measures that operations can implement to control these air contaminants. The proposed amendments, including requiring conditional use permits and increasing the setback requirements in certain areas, will help mitigate future environmental impacts with production and processing operations. And we look forward to our continued partnership, working together as we move forward to address environmental challenges with current operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Robert Ruhl.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to thank you for your efforts on this new ordinance you're putting through, but we have not addressed the existing problem with this odor. I have a neighbor that is a serious offender, and there is a health factor to this, and I'm going to call it sleep deprivation. It comes in about 11 o'clock to 4:00 in the morning, so strong you can't sleep with the odor. But that takes your next day out, you can't function, you haven't slept. So we have a serious problem with that. And it does make myself sick, and I have one other neighbor that gets very ill from the strength of the odor. It depends on how strong it is coming through, whether it makes us ill. And this guy is really an offender. So we need to stay on this subject and address the existing growers and their problems. I think what you've done is great, but we haven't addressed the existing problem. And I'd like to see more done on it. And I thank you, Al, for your efforts, I do appreciate it, okay? Addressed him mainly because he's my commissioner. But, there is a serious problem, and we need to look at the health side of this, more so than just the odor. Because, you know, when you don't sleep, you can't function. You can't have friends over for the Fourth of July. I got hit about 7:00 that night, and it was so strong, I couldn't have people over, because nobody wants to stand there and smell this. So this is a subject that needs to be considered as you proceed onto these new ordinances. And we need to take these new ones and try to apply them back to the existing. We have to do this. And I'm not up here trying to say I want all these guys out of business, I'm not. I hope they all become millionaires, just don't do it at my expense. That's what I'm asking, you know, because it does affect us seriously. So, at that, I just need to let you people know there is something else to consider, is the health side, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So thank you for your comments and coming to testify. I hope that you will continue to work with Ms. Julia Oliver in the Clean Air Agency as, on the land use side, this is looking forward, as you know, and not back, as others are grandfathered in. However, they do have tools in their toolbox to allow them to continue working on that item moving forward.
Next one I have is Sam Childs.
Hello, my name is Sam Childs, and my issue generally follows along with the previous We're talking about new regulations going forward, and we're talking about opening up outdoor grows for the future. My suggestion is that we start with not just letting anybody come in, but keeping it down to a tier-one sized operation, and if we can keep that from offending the neighbors, then maybe we expand it to a little bit larger. But let's not start with the largest operation right off the bat. I happen to live in an area with six marijuana growers all in my area. For 2015, I thought that I had a horrible stunk invasion, didn't know there was marijuana in the area. I found out really fast that there is. Last year during the drought, we did not have a marijuana problem. The outdoor grows weren't growing, or at least they didn't appear to be growing on a large scale. This year, because we're halfway through the season, I don't suspect that we're going to have huge numbers either. But next summer, I would expect full production. So can we start small, give it a little bit of time, see how it goes, and then expand, instead of starting with the big grows right off the bat? I don't have a problem with 2,000 square foot building with great filters, and I can't see it, and I don't know what they're doing, I don't care about them. But if they take my water, they stink up my area, they pollute my air, they make me not be able to sleep because there's lights all over the place, I would say that the outdoor grows that have light stuff on it need to have blackout shades with the sun-up, sundown timeframe. If they don't, then it's a problem. And that would be all I really want, is to make sure we start small and don't kill us right off the bat.
Great, thank you. Next one I have signed up is, I believe it's Erin Jewell.
Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Erin Jewell, and I'm the owner of Funky Farms, a tier-one cannabis producer, processor located in rural northern Spokane County. As a tier-one producer processor, I represent the smallest of cannabis farmers, and I am literally a guy growing cannabis out of his garage. I'm here today to speak out in opposition to requiring cannabis producers to acquire conditional use permits. The process for obtaining a conditional use permit is tedious, time-consuming, and very expensive. The cost associated with conditional use permits can very well exceed $5,000 and really does nothing to improve public safety. This hurts small farmers like myself, and gives an advantage to larger, better-funded operations that are the very type of thing we're trying to discourage. As a small business owner that has never generated a complaint, and a homeowner that just wants to improve his community, I find this completely unfair. The very fact that I can't put up a fence around my existing cannabis farm actually puts me and my family in danger. I got into the cannabis industry because I wanted to help people and make people happy. Cannabis farmers have enough regulations, paperwork, and taxes to deal with. Requiring conditional use permits is not the solution, it's just another problem. I would suggest conditional use permits for farms that have stacked more than two licenses onto one tax parcel, or farms that have over 10 employees, or something of that nature. As a producer, processor, I can grow cannabis, dry cannabis, and packaged cannabis to go to retail and be sold. To not allow me to package my cannabis to go to the retail and be sold makes absolutely no sense and hurts my business. So I can't imagine why we would try to ban limited processing in rural Spokane County. That would just take away people's jobs. Between the fees that Spokane Regional Clean Air is obviously interested in collecting, the conditional use permit and application fees, and the fact that I can't package my own cannabis to go to retail, along with the fact that I am among the smallest farmers in the state, these rules will without a doubt put me out of business, or at the very least, make my life very uncomfortable. So let's do the right thing here, do not require small farmers to obtain a conditional use permit just to put up a fence around their property. Let's allow limited processing in Spokane County, and make sure that the Spokane Regional Clean Air treats us fairly. Thank you.
Sir?
Mr. Chair, for clarif-
Oh, yeah.
Actually, not for him, it's actually for staff. For clarification-
Mr. Peterson?
Looking to either John or Randy, didn't we adjust the limited processing to actually reflect the change in state law? So-
Yes, Commissioner, we did. Under the state law, limited processing, which includes packaging, is not considered processing.
Okay, just for clarification, while the language was removed from our ordinance, it was actually, it was done so to reflect the changes in state law that were made.
Okay. Next speaker I have signed up is Ruth Ryan.
Ruth Ryan, 1409 West Paradise Road. Okay. This, maybe, what he was talking about, maybe that's part of, maybe part of my problem, is that I got these documents so late, I only had time to read them through once, and that's a question Gina and Shaylin did very good, but I don't know why they didn't get so into a position where I could read them last week. So, anyway. My quick reading of the document concerns any changes within enforcement, even with the new projects. What we have currently, I have a grow that's to the west of me, that's terrible smelling. I have a grow that's to the east of me, that's just fine, you know. And so, what about enforcement that makes it so that we can all live together in the neighborhood? And I saw, my quick reading, I saw no change in how that would be enforced. I would like to, you know, know, how can we, how can we do that so that things would be in compliance? And I think, if I understand correctly, the change in the area designation of where they can be grown, it's still my area that they can still do grows. So, you know, if there can be some, if there's detail in here about enforcement that changes, because we can't seem to get any change in the smell on the west. So, that's, that'd be my question, I don't know if you have answer. Thank you.
So, Mr. Peterson, you want to address the issue with regard to enforcement, and then I can also speak to the issue with regard to the Clean Air Agency, and if I misspeak, Ms. Julie Oliver can help correct me.
Be happy to. Commissioners, John Peterson, the enforcement mechanism has not changed with adoption of this interim ordinance. However, going forward, anybody that would apply for and receive a conditional use permit, they are not in compliance and receive complaints, the hearing examiner has the authority to revoke the conditional use permit if someone's not complying with the conditions of approval and the performance criteria that apply to the conditional use permit. There's also the process where Spokane Regional Clean Air still has the ability to take enforcement action consistent with their existing regulations.
Right, and so, the one thing, I guess, to sum that up, is that with conditional use permit, there are performance standards that are identified with regard to the hearing examiner's determination of the conditions around the permit, and if those performance standards aren't met, that currently don't exist, then the hearing examiner or the building department can revoke the license. And so that's, that's a tool that we have as a result of this, and the conditional use permit that didn't exist before. And then the Clean Air Agency is continuing to work on other ways to try and enforce the odor side of it, so. So, you can talk to Ms. Oliver, and she can be more specific with regard to some of the actions Clean Air Agency is taking. And I will comment that we did have one enforcement action from the Clean Air Agency that went all the way to the State Pollution Control Board, and Pollution Control Board ruled in favor of the Clean Air Agency in that determination and stuff. So, we do have that as additional support. The last person that I have signed up is Tony Nercian. Oh, Nercian. So, if there's anybody else that would like to provide testimony, please grab a yellow sheet, or I'll call for anybody who wants to provide testimony, and then we'll ask you to fill out a yellow sheet before I close the hearing. So, hi, Tony.
Al, it's been over three years.
I know.
And we've been coming here, and we've been testifying, and I can't believe we're here again. I'm sorry, just, I just feel like I'm at the end of my rope. Tony Nercesian, Palouse Farms, I'm a tier-one cannabis producer, processor. And we went through all the hearings, we did. You were very thorough, we were felt as staff, the commissioners, you all worked together, you worked to understand where the citizens were coming from. We all were able to get our building permits, and we went forward. And then we had some uprisings. I think of the woman who had the dream home view, and she no longer had it. I think of a grower who had neighbors who didn't like the smell, so we came back to more hearings. And what I envisioned happening, and I had the opportunity in the mid-'90s to serve on the planning commission, is I thought, yes, they do need site reviews, and you need a little bit of insight for what you're doing, because we do impact, you know, we're very lucky, but, and most growers are. I would say the majority of our producer processes are not generating a lot of phone calls, but a few people are getting a lot of phone calls. And on the planning commission, we would get in John Peterson's car, you'd have a packet, you would take a tour, there'd be a hearing similar to this with people talking, and a decision could be made. You have added on the conditional use permit. I feel like you are taking an Advil and killing us, just, it is such a heavy burden. And I know I'm grandfathered in, that's not the point, there are others behind me coming up. And Al, I remember you saying at the first moratorium hearing, if we shove everyone into the industrial zone, there will be no industrial zone except that which is filled with pot in the buildings and things outside. And I look at this- And I look at this and I wonder, how did we get here? What did we as an industry do to deserve such oversight? When I truly believe the majority of our people are good people, we work very hard, we pay good wages, I'm a Tier One, our salaries were $120,000 last year, plus the taxes, and Tom and I haven't drawn a salary yet, we're working on it, green res is a little different than you think it is. But the burden of a conditional use permit is huge, and I feel it's overkill. I was very glad to hear that you're still going to allow us to stuff and package our little bags of flour. We custom process everything to those when we want more, like concentrates, we custom process it to someone in the industrial zone, because we do want, if there's a boom, that it's not in a neighborhood. We totally get the zoning, we appreciate where you have people, this just, and it just feels so heavy. It doesn't feel, I can't come to grips with it. It feels like overkill. You had a volunteer planning commission group who went out and did things, I don't know if you have another organization that would do that, Pete, if it were the Planning Commission, I think a conditional use permit is just a burden. We carry burdens like I can't tell you. I can't write off the gas to deliver product because I'm a drug dealer the minute I leave the driveway. We paid $70,000 in items that we couldn't write off as business, that Tom and I always wrote off as businesses. There's burdens that are there, we need to be good neighbors, we need to work with Julie at the Clean Air Department, you know, there are things you need from us. I would like my rural neighbors who don't grow pot to put white shadows on their things, because I see all their lights anyway. And you do have a rule for that and it can be enforced. So, I'd just like you to take a deep breath for all of us, and really think about that, because it feels very heavy-handed, and I think we can get there without doing that. It just feels extreme.
Okay. So, let me share with you some of the thought process that, very close to your time being up, so thank you. So, part of the challenge that we were having in going through, and you're right, I mean, the unfortunate thing is, I think the majority of the people in the industry are doing the right thing. And it's unfortunate that there are those that have chosen to ignore the interests, concerns, and rights of their neighbors. And so our job is to protect everybody, and especially everybody's property rights and the right to enjoy their property. And so the challenge was, how do you create a regulation that treats all of the properties the same? Because a grow in the south part of the county is much different than a grow in the north part of the county. A grow out in the rural area is much different than a grow that happens to be closer to residential properties. And so, the ability for us to create a standard that addressed all issues, created a standard that would then be unfair to a lot of folks, because it would have been burdensome. So the nice thing about the conditional use permit is that it takes into consideration the specific characteristics of a piece of property, and then designs conditions around that piece of property. For instance, somebody that is in a valley surrounded by trees and not a lot of wind is going to be a different kind of producer in terms of air quality than somebody that's out in an open field that's windy and has the ability to have that odor transfer over a lot longer distance than somebody that's surrounded by trees. And in fact, one of the things we added in this ordinance was natural buffer areas, so that you could try and break down that travel of the odor with vegetation. And so that's something new that we've added into the ordinance to reflect the fact that there are different ways to deal with the negative impacts of a marijuana grow. You are vested and stuff-
I know.
So you are already permitted and this ordinance doesn't affect you, and you operate a good operation that doesn't generate the kind of complaints that we are dealing with with some of the other operators. I would acknowledge that if everybody operated the way that you did and some of the other folks that are in the audience, this would be a different conversation. But when I, and Clean Air, and fellow commissioners get calls from property owners like Robert here, saying he can't sleep at night in his own home, that's a concern.
And that's where you do have the Clean Air people. Do you have the ability, when you have someone who has a lot of fines, or you're dealing with someone with a lot of complaints, not just the smell, but a lot of complaints on bad neighbors, whatever, we renew every year with a control board, and one of the conditions are, you cannot, like, we have to go through background check and everything, you have to be a good citizen.
So right now, that condition doesn't exist. That's one of the things that we get through the conditional use permit, is if you're in production and you're not meeting the conditions, you're not meeting the standards, then the hearing examiner or Mr. Peterson has the ability to pull your license. So hopefully that is another enforcement tool for those that are unwilling to be good neighbors. And so, this is, this has been an evolution of how do we get to a place to where we can support an industry that's new to this community, the voters approved to allow for marijuana grows in this community, so we're respectful of the wishes of the voters, but at the same time, we're also elected to protect the property rights of adjacent property owners. And so where's the balance at? And so we've continued to work on trying to find the balance. I would not be surprised that we do not end up coming back together and dealing with hemp, and how does hemp industry affect what we do here? And so that's another conversation that we're going to get engaged in. We're trying to find the balance, and so this was the best thought that we could come up with, hearing the concerns of a whole variety of folks on both sides of the issue. Where's the middle? And so this is an attempt to try and find the middle. So, I hear your concerns, I've, you know, that I've attended these hearings, both at the, here and on the other side of the state, so, you know, short of growing it myself, I think I've got a pretty good background in this area, but it is a challenge, it is a challenge. And I hear your concerns, and I know that this is difficult for those that are doing the right thing. I totally get that.
And there, is there any, when we talk about things like the Planning Commission, this can't be handled through the Planning Commission instead of going all the way to the hearing examiner?
No, that process is actually more drawn out, and it could be more costly, and so the hearing examiner is the quickest way to get to a permit, so, yeah. So thanks for being here, appreciate it. So, that completes the list of folks that have signed up. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come on down? Again, if you haven't filled out the yellow slip, I'd ask that before you leave, you do so, and please introduce yourself with your name and address.
I'll get you your yellow paper. So my name's Crystal Oliver, I live at 27315 North Monroe Road, it's also the site of my Tier Three Cannabis Farm, and I have been to every single one of these meetings, so starting to get used to it. But I am an outdoor cannabis farmer, I am on a small track ag parcel, and we harvest once a year. So our odor impact is really minimal, it's a couple weeks at the end of October, and it's pretty darn windy where I'm at, I would say that I have a very good location as far as a cannabis farm is concerned. I do want to comment that I am really happy to see that the county commissioners, that you've lifted the outdoor ban. I applaud you in not going the direction of forcing cultivation back indoors, and I think that when we're looking at, you know, the long-term, you know, future of cannabis cultivation and farming, I think that that will definitely be outdoors, greenhouse, hoop houses, that sort of thing. And certainly when we're looking at like the energy code requirements, I think it's going to have to go in that direction. I support the 20% and 50% parcel coverage limits, it's consistent with the rest of the code. I do question the cup requirement for ag parcels, I understand it for the rural parcels, I myself am on an ag parcel, I've got, you know, 30 head of cattle across the street from me, I've got another neighbor who is now doing like a dog kennel and dog training, and I've got another, you know, neighbors with horses, neighbors with goats, I've got a neighbor who's a tree farmer, I've got neighbors who do target practice in their backyards, every Sunday I hear them, hear people shooting their guns, makes me jump when I'm in my garden, but, you know, that's part of that sort of living out there in those agricultural lands, so, you know, I kind of question whether or not a cup process is needed. I also strongly oppose the statement that cannabis is not agriculture due to its inclusion in the state CSA. It is a plant, it grows in the ground. I understand, you know, the reason that you've given here, and I think when we look at this, you know, through a lens, and we're looking at this as history, I think, you know, this conversation about whether or not cannabis is agriculture is going to be something that they kind of laugh about, that we had to argue and fight over whether or not a plant was a plant, but, you know, that's the future, it's coming. I would strongly support the formation of some sort of cannabis work group, or maybe, maybe even some sort of subcommittee that could, you know, possibly look at addressing some of these issues that neighbors are having, because like I, as a responsible cannabis farmer who cares about my neighbors, I wouldn't mind, you know, talking to other cannabis farmers and sort of advocating for them to care a little bit more about their neighbors, because I think maybe we can work together as a community to kind of, you know, help address some of those issues. You know, I think we're going to have some issues with hemp farming, you're going to see the same odors, but they're probably going to be cultivating much larger pieces of land with that, so I think that's something we're going to be revisiting. I'd certainly, you know, like I said, I'd really appreciate the formation of some sort of work group where we could come up with some more collaborative, you know, collaborative rulemaking there. I do have some concerns about the cup process being sort of subjective in nature, I think as part of maybe a work group, we could look at coming up with some more objective standards, so there was a little bit more guidance, I'm a little bit, I'm concerned about the subjectivity of it. And let's see, yeah, I mean, I think that's really all that I had to say about it, is I just, yeah, I'm a little concerned about the cup process and it's subjective in nature, and would like to see us firm up some more objective measures there.
Thank you. That's, that's actually one of the, one of the things we tried to do, is provide some kind of direction for the hearing examiner, so that as he's looking at these applications, it has some kind of idea about the concerns of the board and stuff, so that, that language was added in there specifically. But as we've talked in the past, I, when I was with the, well, still am with the State Building Code Council, we did a stakeholder group, and I thought it was a very effective process and stuff, and I know that you had some involvement with that as well and stuff, and so I've talked to John Peterson about, you know, forming a similar type effort here locally, as we kind of look at what hemp is going to do and how it's going to impact the community and stuff, so we'll continue to have that conversation.
Yeah, that was definitely a good government-
Right.
-with the State Building Code Council, it was very representative, very collaborative.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next person I have signed up is Kimberly Huff.
Hello, again, I've been here, like, you know, I'm the owner of Flying High Route and Otis Orchards, we're on a 26-acre parcel that is pretty much 25 of it, or probably 24 right there, is all in alfalfa, we're only like one little portion on the corner in a building. I'm concerned with the, I agree with everything pretty much, but the cup process, I think that for the smaller farms, now we are a Tier Two, so we're like right in the middle. I'm concerned with some of my partners, and I call them my partners, my other farmers, the size and the, with the cut process, with the amount of the fees associated. I mean, some of these farmers, and I talked to a lot of them, are really struggling on the Tier Ones and things like that. The price that, for, for them to come in and pay on top of it is really struggling. I'm sorry, I'm just like, I only got some looking at this stuff today, and so I'm kind of stuttering, I wasn't prepared. So I encourage the commission maybe to look at a sliding scale, maybe for a one-tier, two-tier, three-tier on the cut price, you know, cut fees, maybe for a Tier One, there could be a lower fee for that because of the impact of, compared to a Tier Three, that's what I would encourage. If there has to be anything, I really don't, you know, I understand that you guys need a tool to help these people, but for people that are following the rules and being good players and stuff like that, there has to be, I mean, we're just being pretty almost thrown under the bus too because of it, and that's how I feel. I mean, because even though we're good players, we're being punished too. I've never had a complaint, you know, I have an outdoor facility, but we don't have any hoop houses or anything like that to concentrate a smell. Like I said, that's my only thing.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Mr. Peterson, you want to talk about the fee structure?
Sure. Thank you, board members, just again for the record, John Peterson, the present fee schedule has a provision that allows for fee waivers or reductions based on a case-by-case basis, and if someone feels the fees for a conditional use permit are egregious or fundamentally unfair, or they constitute economic hardship, they can always apply for, by letter, to myself in consultation with the CEO on each particular application. If it's an economic burden, they need to provide that to us, and then we'll make a decision based on each case. So there are provisions for that, and it's not uncommon for us to reduce fees when it constitutes an economic hardship.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, that, come on down. Is there anybody else that would like to provide any testimony tonight? So, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
My name is Chris Culbertson, 31023 North Staghorn Road, Deer Park, Washington. Thanks for hearing me, commissioners. I had no intention of speaking tonight, so, excuse me if I'm a little nervous, but here I am. I currently own a pretty good-sized, over 100,000 square foot greenhouse operation in Deer Park area in northern Spokane County. We're quite rural. Until the implementation of this most recent ordinance, we met all of the, all of the criteria for a Tier Three grow operation, and then some, the setbacks were all made, we are an existing operation, so the setbacks to the road were met. Numerous conversations with building and planning, they gave us the go-ahead to, they said, yes, you meet all of the criteria for a Tier Three grow, and he goes, do you intend to grow? And I says, no, I've been approached by a grower to sell, and he said, are you going to be able to retire? And I go, yeah, looks like a couple of million dollars, I'm going to sell my business. And he said, congratulations. And we got on, as we were communicating, he was on Google Earth looking at the billing of setbacks. At the time, I owned, I owned three adjoining five-acre parcels, two of which had greenhouses on them, one of which is a rental, and he said, well, the only problem is you don't meet the setbacks to the property next door, you'd have to combine the two into a 10 and make that a 10-acre piece and eliminate the property line, which we started the process. So in the first of May, I entered into a purchase and sale agreement for the property, we took $100,000 in earnest money, and basically had to be out by the first of August. So, we sold the place, bought a house up the road, and this kind of caught me by surprise. So I understand the purpose of the conditional use permit and that sort of thing, believe me, although I do feel that the biggest issue with this industry is odor, and I feel that there's probably more muscle in the enforcement portion through the Clean Air than there is in actually like building and planning. I think that's where the real enforcement, the arm of the enforcement in to keep an operation like mine. And I don't mean to come and whine at you, because I'm looking at, and, you know, I can't sell a commercial greenhouse operation to a flower guy, none of us flower guys are dumb enough to spend that kind of money, but it is very valuable for what it is, and we're, it's been, the people that have looked in the cannabis industry and some of the county people I've talked to says, this, this, this operation is ideal, we've got two neighbors that are 400 feet away, the rest of them are 700, 800, 900 feet away, and they're used to my business being there. I don't intend to sell this and take the money and run. As a professional horticulturist, 30 years in the industry, we grow everything, poinsettias, Easter lilies, and neighbors are used to the business there, they're used to the traffic. We run a $600,000 a year payroll, and we're, I think we're the third largest employer in- And we're, I think we're the third-largest employer in, in the Deer Park area. And most of my crew are onboard to stay on and help run the operation. And I've been, I've been asked to do the same. But, so, for a conditional use permit, what puts me in a tough spot with this sale coming up? And I, I understand that this probably is going to stay in effect. But isn't there some, some avenue for a situation like mine where we're going to, we're going to meet the requirements of the Clean Air Act? Is there some mechanism for something like mine to be grandfathered into previous conditions?
So, I would suggest that you have a conversation with Mr. Peterson. He's the best one to be in a position to be able to address your specific situation and stuff. So, that would be my best advice for you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Don't have any more slips. So, anybody else in the audience who would like to write any testimony on hearing item number five? Second call for anybody who wants to provide testimony on hearing item number five. Third and final call. Seeing nobody come to the microphone, I'm going to close the hearing and look to my fellow commissioners for direction.
All right, Mr. Chair. I have a little bit more direction on this one. So, it is 7/11. And I would move that we affirm the interim zoning ordinance for production of marijuana in unincorporated areas of Spokane County, adopted under resolution number 17-0539. And direct staff to prepare finding and facts to reflect that decision to be signed, and other than an open public meeting.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Kat?
Did that motion include the motion to extend the time?
Oh, I forgot that piece. You're right. For an additional six months. I do have it written down here. Sorry. Add that one to it as well. Friendly?
Second.
Okay. So, I've got, I've got an amended motion and a second. Commissioner O'Quinn.
This, I just wanted to say thanks to everyone for coming down, and for all of you who participated in this process. We held numerous workshops to get to this point. It was very much an interactive conversation on behalf of everyone. Thank you to the Clean Air Agency for your involvement. I do hope that you'll continue to move forward to beef up and enhance, and utilize the tools that do exist within your agency and under state law. I think there's an opportunity there to move forward in that arena. Every time you open up the land you side, it opens up additional cans of worms, right? That we, a whole bunch of different, other issues that we end up having to address. And so, while I would say the CUP process is not necessarily an ideal, what it does is, as Commissioner French said earlier, allows us to have the flexibility to look at each location individually. Because what came out through this, all of the conversations is there are a few bad apples that are creating all the problems, and the majority of the folks are being good neighbors. And so, figuring out a way to not punish those who are doing it right, and to actually enforce, provide a mechanism for enforcement for those who are not, at the end of the day, was the goal. So, thanks again for everyone who played an active role in the numerous workshops that we had to get to this point.
Commissioner Kearns?
No, I, again, just want to, want to echo what Commissioner O'Quinn said about. Just thank you very much to everyone that's been involved with this. The, I also want to get, I also want to say thank you to Crystal Oliver for being so open as a representative from, from the growers. You've been, you've been very open. You've been very proactive about being engaged in this conversation from the very beginning. And so, really, just thank you for your expertise on this and working with our staff here at the county to, to come to this current, this current resolution where we're at. And, you know, we're, we're hoping this, that this solves a good amount of the problems that we have. But again, you know, the, this is an industry that in, in this state is, is not going to go, is probably not going to go away. So, we need to work within the boundaries of the, of the initiative that passed. And we need to find these types of local solutions that work here in Spokane County. And this is the next step. And I, and I, I feel confident that this is one that, that is going to work for our area here.
So, in closing comments, the, you know, and Tony made the comment about what I said almost three years ago about the industrial buildings in the county would be consumed with marijuana production and processing. And, and that has in fact happened. There, there is an incredible amount of industry that has consumed surplus capacity in the industrial areas and stuff. So, for that, I say thank you, you know? Because now we've got empty buildings that are now producing a product, and on the tax rolls, and, and doing all the things that we hope them to do. The, you know, it's interesting, the laws are not created for the majority of the people. They're created to address the minority. Those that choose to not be good neighbors, choose to do things that are not in the best interest of the community. And so, we try and find that balance. And so, this is the latest iteration of that process. But it has been a long road. And I can say that there are a number of counties in the state that don't allow outdoor grows at all, period. Everything's indoor. We did not take that path. We said that it should be a combination of both outdoor and indoor. Colorado allows for only indoor growths. We did not follow that model. The state collects the tax revenue and leaves the regulatory side of it to the local jurisdictions to deal with. And yet, quite frankly, it hasn't given us the tools, in many cases, to be able to address some of the situations that are, that we are experiencing. So, we are left to try and develop those tools locally. And so, I welcome the opportunity, as we continue the process, to do much like we did at the state with the State Building Code Council, and, and have a collaborative participation and effort to try and figure out how we deal with hemp, because that's coming down the pike. And, and then, you know, we will, this is also an interim ordinance, so we will hopefully achieve the outcomes that we're looking for in this, in this effort. So, for all of those that have participated over the years, thank you very much for your wisdom, your patience, and your guidance. For those of you that have been impacted by the industry, we hear you. And we are working aggressively to try and find a solution. And I wish we had better tools. We don't yet, but we're working at it. So, hopefully, we'll find a solution that'll allow you to enjoy your personal property the way you envisioned to do it. So, with that, then I will call for a vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion passes unanimously. That then gets us to our item number six, which is our final open public forum. Again, this is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to like to share any comments with the board about any topic that is not on our agenda tonight. First call. Second call for anybody who wants to provide testimony. Third and final call. Seeing nobody, run to the microphone. Thank you very much for joining us. And as a closing comment, this is the last meeting for Commissioner O'Quinn. And so, I want to give her the opportunity to share any final comments. And then, the board will have comments to reflect our feelings about our service. Thank you. Go ahead.
So, this is my last public hearing. I'm officially done on Monday. I've stepped down as commissioner, and will be taking over the role of CEO of the Inland Northwest Community Foundation. I am excited about the new opportunity. It's a great organization. But I will tell you, I have absolutely loved serving Spokane County as a commissioner for almost five years. It has been an honor to serve the constituents of this community and to work on issues that range from water and marijuana, like we had tonight, to growth management and land use, and solid waste, and mental health, and, you know, animal control, the fairgrounds, you name it, economic development. I mean, the, the role of a commissioner is one of the most unique jobs in this community. And it has been a privilege and an honor to serve the citizens of this community. And so, I just wanted to say thank you, and for the listening audience who are watching on TV, thank you to Spokane County for giving me the opportunity to serve you. And I will continue to be an active and engaged citizen in this community. You may even actually see me at a commissioner hearing now and then on a topic that is important to me. But thanks again for the opportunity to serve.
Commissioner Kearns?
I just want to say, Commissioner O'Quinn, it's been an absolute pleasure to, to serve with you on this body. Your, your leadership in the county will be sorely missed. You, you are truly somebody that is very clear, cares about the work you've done here, cares about the citizens of this community. It's, I, I'm glad that, that you're able to leave this on your own terms and for a job that you are clearly, clearly excited about, and that you're going to do a fantastic job at. So, it's been wonderful to serve with you, and we wish you the best of luck.
And I likewise will share with you that you have served your constituents very, very well. You are a hard worker. You are a critical thinker. And you always come prepared. And willing to fight the good fight, stand up for what you believe in, and serve as a strong advocate for not only your issues, but the issues of the constituents that elected you to serve them and stuff. So, thank you for your service. Wish you nothing but the best of success and prosperity. And thank you.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you to the staff, and these two in particular, who are still here, John and Randy, and the others. I think I've spent more public hearing nights with John and Randy than probably any of our other staff in my last five years. And to all the Spokane County staff, just an incredible group of people working hard for this community. So, thank you very much. I've enjoyed working with all of you.
And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.